So, thank you, counsel.
Yeah.
Joy and Ken have been working diligently with the team.
Uh huh.
And, you know, working to make sure we hone in and present everything we need to present to you for your consideration.
Uh huh.
I think we're in the ballpark.
Uh huh.
And it's just about, there's still some uncertainties that are swirling around with regard to the Board of Education and the state with funding we're trying to get a handle on. But I don't know if Joy might want to open up with just an overview of the revenue side of things.
Uh huh, sure.
I think we should because we've, you know, taken a fresh look at revenues and also I took in some news from the state that could be helpful to us. We probably should talk about revenues first.
Okay, let's do it.
And so I had...
So, if you're on, are you on a sheet?
Yeah, well, so...
To kind of keep you straight here?
We're not exactly, I'm shuffling.
Oh, you're shuffling, okay.
I'm shuffling the cards.
No problem.
This particular worksheet shows, you're familiar with this.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Monthly revenues, right?
Okay, okay, gotcha.
Um, so, um, when we prepared, you know, we prepared the budget for fiscal year 23 for revenues, we did take a conservative approach, which, you know, that can be a good thing, right? So, we budgeted for local income tax revenues at 27 million.
Uh huh.
Thank you. We budgeted for recordation tax revenues at 5.5 million and then 3.6 million for transfer taxes.
Uh huh.
Um, one, you know, interestingly, you know, when you look at this over, you've looked at the revenues over a span of time where you can see is that the numbers that we are budgeting for are truly conservative. And I wonder if we need to revisit those. So, for example, for our local income tax, we budgeted 27 million.
It's at 35.
Well, in fiscal year 21, we hit 35. We seem to be doing pretty well so far this year.
Uh huh.
We just, we just got some news about an additional rep, uh, payment, but we need to follow that up.
Uh huh, some meeting on Thursday from the comptroller about pushing some money that they've identified out the counties.
Right.
Two, 231 million.
Yeah, total 231 million. We don't, we have no idea how, what that means for us. But, again, the question is, should we be as conservative as we have been with local income taxes for fiscal year 23?
I see, I see, I see it. So, am I seeing this right? So, 20, 2020 was 41 million.
Yep.
And then 21 was 35 million.
Correct.
So, so, you know, just counsel, should we go ahead and be a little conservative and make, could be another drop, make it instead of 20?
Yeah.
Maybe be more aggressive something.
A little bit more aggressive and make it 30.
If you believe this trend is going to continue. Yeah. So, that's a black box formula. The comptroller formula is kind of, I mean, it's not entirely clear.
Uh huh.
And it's hard to predict, but that's fair. I mean, I think she was looking at the recordation and transfer, and if you look back.
Those also.
Yeah, yeah, if you look back, and she was trying to see about adding a million dollars to the revenue.
In those two categories.
In those two categories.
Yes, in total, but I also would like...
Recordation and transfer.
Okay, gotcha, yeah, I, I got you.
Oh, go ahead.
If you go back to 2014, I mean, you look at your trend line, and I think even if you raised it by, and I'm just taking her recommendation.
Uh huh.
If you look like you raised it 500,000 each to get another million, you're probably still being very conservative.
Uh huh.
I also, Clay, I would recommend that we maybe increase the local income tax by a million, so.
Well, see, that's what I was, that's what I was thinking too, or more. I mean, do you, do you, do you know why it's, like you say, I mean, you go from 41 to 35.
I'm conservative.
For the whole page?
Yeah, two for the whole page.
Two for the whole page.
Two for the whole page.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take your recommendation. That's, yeah, what do you think, counsel? Is that, is that...
Um, if you look at the trend, of course, you can't see the budgeted amount before 20.
Correct.
So, um, recordation and transfer has always been a tricky one in the past.
It has. But if you do 500, 500, and you do the local at a million, I think it's safe.
It appears to be...
There's no sign of the real estate market cooling off. That, that seems like an easy, yeah, an easy add.
But even if it does cool a bit, I mean, that, raising that that much, I mean, you're still being very conservative on that. I mean, you're looking at 2014, FY14, and we're not even, so, I mean, even if real estate cooled off a bit, you're still, you're still, you're forecasting another half a million on each, you're still being very conservative.
I would agree.
Uh huh.
I agree, that, that...
So, you've been commenting steadily ever since, ever since 14?
Yes.
Uh, at least to the tune of what, well, you, from 17 to 18, you took a drop.
Yeah, there's a blip in it.
Yeah, it took a drop there, and it stayed below again in 19, came back up in 20.
Right, but the drops are not...
Oh, yeah, they're not ceiling, I mean, floor drops, they're just, and then transfer.
Sure, you know, after tax, sort of.
Went up, went up, went up, went up.
Follows the same pattern.
Yeah, went up.
Well, we've seen, we, that follows the gradual warming that we've seen in the real estate market over the course of the last 10 years.
Right.
It's reflected in those numbers.
Now, the one thing about housing market is that, is the inventory of homes.
Uh huh.
That's the one thing I'm hearing as a national trend, there's not enough homes out there for buyers. Um, uh...
That's the pressure for development.
That's the, well, it is, whether we're going to capture that development in 23 or not, if they start construction 23, you're not getting those people in the homes to count them until 24, 25. So, you know, right now, what's the, what's the biggest project out there right now that could be completed in, in this fiscal year? Easton has some apartments, but they aren't even up yet. Nothing in Cordova, nothing in St. Michael's.
Yeah, and, and some of that was, you know, again, just to be fully cognizant, I mean, a lot of this was refi.
Yeah.
We had extremely low interest rates and interest rates are coming up.
But now, they just raised that. They just raised interest rates, correct, so they just raised that.
You're going to see that cool.
Yeah.
Inventory is going down, so you're going to see that cool. But even, even with that, we're projecting back so far, I mean, we, we were projecting so low, which is fine, I mean, that's incredibly conservative. I think Joy kind of felt, and I agree, that there's room there to bump it up a little bit. And even by pumping up a little bit, I think we still understand that interest rates are creeping up, inventory is running out, and so the real estate market is going to cool a little bit, but I still think that we have...
This, this still remains a conservative, even if the asset...
It is, it really is.
It is.
So, what's the, what's the actual ask, recommendation, Dan?
The actual ask is that we increase local income tax by 1 million dollars.
1 million?
Yes, revenues.
Nothing for the other two?
Well, the other two, we're recommending that we increase each category by half a million.
Okay. Five there?
I'm, I'm comfortable with all the recommendations.
Five there, they give us two there, okay.
Can I get the average rate from 2011 to 2019?
Say again?
25 million, 276,000.
Where are you, Frank?
The average of 2011 to 2019.
Oh.
Income tax totals.
Okay.
Are you on just income tax?
Yeah.
Is, how much did you say, 25 million?
Yeah.
It, it can't be because, well...
Yeah, if you go back to 2011.
Yeah, if you go back to 2011, it could be.
Uh huh.
Yeah. But those are very early years.
In 2011, we're probably just coming out of that bubble burst.
Oh, yeah, market wasn't good at all.
Yeah, we're just coming out of it. So, that means that we're going 28 for income, is that right?
20 million.
28 from 27 to 28?
If I'm right, 27.
Yes, that is the ask, it'd be a million dollars.
Okay, so, that'd be 28.
Right.
And then...
Increase to the...
And then, recordation would be 5.5, right?
It'll be 5, 5.9 roughly.
I'm sorry, 5.9?
Yes.
5.9, thank you.
4.9 and, and then 4.1.
And then, 4.1?
4.1, yeah.
4.1 down there, okay. I'm comfortable, you need a raise of hand, Chuck?
Yeah.
I think Frank is still thinking.
Frank, you okay? We figured something.
I'm trying to put back a trend, but it's probably going to be to, I mean, the trends are, they've only been for just a couple of years. 27, 28, 26, 28, 25, 29, 31.
Uh huh.
And then we look at the first, October was lower.
Uh huh.
Are you looking at this year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Frank, even if you go to that 28, you're going back to where you were in 2017, so you're, you're still being conservative with your budgeting of income tax.
And so, we were told that, the reason that the, the November number, I think, is what you're looking at, Frank, you could, you're seeing that as a decline against budget. We were told that the reason that it was down was because of how the legal returns were being submitted.
They filed later.
Yeah, they were coming in later. And so, then you see...
That's what I'm worried about now, pushing out the deadline, you know, it could be a financial finish.
But then you see, again, you know, we go out to February, and our revenues pop back up by 3 million, almost.
Would you like to...
Yes, thank you.
I guess if you show confidence in the economy, I mean, everybody's getting a raise, it seems like, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I can support that.
Okay. All right. So, where are we at property?
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, you have, you have agreement with counsel.
Okay.
To go a million on income tax and 500,000 for recordation.
Okay.
4.1.
Is there anything else you want to cover on the revenue side at this point?
Um...
If you want to just dive in?
So, I guess the choices to would talk about property has to have a nail, or which to would talk about is conservative.
We, this was second, this was behind that property, did you want to touch on that or no?
Sure, we can talk about property taxes now.
Since it's, it is revenue.
It's revenue.
Let me have to check.
Yeah.
Yes. So, right now, we are forecasting revenue, property tax revenue for fiscal year 23 to be about 49.6 billion dollars. And we have included, we, you know, used our formula, Ken used 2% over...
The cap?
Yep. And we also added a penny.
Uh huh.
To do that. But we already know that we have a revenue shortfall in total. We just raised revenues, thank you so much, just a couple of million, but we're still going to have a revenue shortfall unless we can shrink our expense budget significantly. So, the question is, should we consider increasing our property taxes even, rate even higher?
So, just to bring clarity to that gap we're talking about, maybe it's worth talking a little bit about that gap again.
Okay.
You know, I mean, what, what does that look like again? So, we have a Board of Education request, has their core request and the supplemental, and then you have, is it 6 million dollars, is that...
So, it, we, our gap will be lower than 6 million dollars now that we are increasing our revenues by 2, right?
What is, what is, what is the gap that we're trying to cover?
At this point, so the gap is, I'm estimating the gap to be about, I rounded up to 3 million dollars. And that is considering that we also reduced the capital out late budget the last time we spoke. Um, if you just look at expenses associated with the Board of Ed, their cost...
What page are you on?
I'm on this one right here. Is that what we own?
Well, uh, yeah, well, this, that shows you the revenue, the probably...
The percentages.
Yeah, the percentages.
Okay, now, which one are you on?
Over your page, I'm sure.
You know, another thing they use in printing is like the numbers on the page.
It's easier when we were, we had, we could post things on there.
I didn't copy this first.
You need a copy?
Yes.
Give me a second, we'll give you that.
You have a, you do have a, an overview page in your book, but it's out, out of date at this point, so I'll give you anywhere.
So, you, are you suggesting here, while she's printing that, I'm looking at this page here, to use suppl, uh, education supplement?
I'm, I'm proposing that we at least consider it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, and this would, and this is a conversion sheet to how, how that breaks down?
Uh, so, the sheet...
5 cent will bring in...
Yes.
I mean, 0.005 will bring in 300.
I can't see that far.
Wow, and got the glasses on too.
I know, it doesn't matter, I see...
Okay, so this is, this is our conversion chart here?
Yes, yes, right, so...
Okay.
Um, 1 cent...
1 cent.
...is equal to 780,000 dollars.
Yes.
Right, so...
And the 1 cent for 5 years was, as you all remember, that's on the referendum for public safety. So, that brought in 780,000 dollars a year for 5 years to help offset expenses with our buyer company.
Thanks.
Our share of, and...
Rose.
DDS, the expansion of the paramedic service to Northern County, and of course, the cost to do that is much more than 780,000, but that's what the 1 cent does. And I know, counsel, you're considering here what your, what your desire is with regard to passing an education supplemental property tax. You have done in the past, and it's varied different years depending on how you all feel, and somebody's to know, you know, what, what your feeling is on that issue. But it appears that we're trying to make up a gap as we sit here today of about 300,000, right? The gap.
300,000?
No, 300, I'm sorry.
3 million.
3 million.
We're going to cut a truck out.
Yes, so if you look, this is just, you know, again, this is just for discussion, and I put, I put this together pretty recently. So, this worksheet, if you look at the fiscal year 23 column, you'll see that I added 1 million for income taxes and also a million dollars in total for recordation and transfer taxes. We just split it up a little differently. I added 780 for, 780,000 dollars, assuming that we would talk about using an extra penny for a supplement for education.
Gotcha.
All told, then, our revenues for fiscal year 23 total 1, 108 million dollars.
Right.
And right now, our expenses sit at about 110,000 dollars.
110, like...
Very high.
I'm sorry, million, thank you.
So, the shaded boxes are gray dealing with the, on the OPAD?
Yeah, I shaded those because we also, I just, we haven't really talked about those.
If we want to do that again this year?
Right.
So, if...
If you don't want to do that, you have to pull it out. Excuse me.
And if we pull that out, then that can go back into the revenue line, or?
Well, if you pull it out, then your revenue is going to go down. So, this is assuming that we also want to use some OPEB trust funds.
Oh, okay.
As we were counting on in fiscal year 22. Same level.
Now, the, the development impact fee money, that only can go to certain areas, can only be used in certain places.
Correct.
All right, yes, okay. So, that can't be widespread.
No, but if you have those expenses in, you can, you can...
Yeah, like we did, we did the black top, I think we did the black top of the school with that impacting money.
Correct. So, you, yes, you, you are correct.
Okay, no, that's, okay.
So, that's just kind of an overview.
Yes, so that's a, this is just a high level overview, perhaps.
Yeah, in terms of the educational supplement, I would, I would look at what is, what is the increase in the education budget that we're going to authorize? And make sure that the education supplement matches that, because if it, if it doesn't, we're making the pie smaller for all the rest of county services. So, I, you know, we, we need to fund whatever it is, whatever it is we allocate toward the, toward the schools through that, through that supplement.
That would be your policy decision?
Again, we just wanted to present this so we can have a high, yeah, a high level conversation about where we are.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Uh huh. So, so I understand that contingency money, which is right now, we got 1.5, it, just remind me, that's money we can use through the year?
Yes, and we actually have done a good job using it this year.
Right.
Yeah. And so, we would, we, you know, respectfully request to have 1.5 million again for fiscal year 23.
This sheet is showing a delta of 1.8 million.
Yeah.
We were just talking about a delta of 3 million. Is that delta being closed by those two gray highlighted areas?
The reason I said 3 million was because you didn't have this sheet, and again...
Yeah, we hadn't yet talked about those.
We hadn't talked about these numbers, and we also hadn't talked about, including the educational supplement.
All right.
Into these numbers, so...
All right.
The, you know, the 3 million that I said rounded was the 1.8 plus the 800,000 that, but, you know, that actually helped bring the gap smaller, so...
So, now, since we, the four of us just agreed to the first sheet, which is reflected on this sheet, our difference is 1.8?
Yes.
Okay, so let's get the cut.
So, so, thus, um, over the process of what you're going to present to us tonight in going down the road with some of this contingency money, in that 1.4, there's a lot of things through the years that we had to do to get the 1.4.
Correct.
Okay, so now we're predicting, is any, is, is any of that money eligible for the money that's going to be given to us?
To money, ARPA funds?
Yes.
Well, we're going to, we will be scanning, we'll be scanning the environment for, there's a lot of grant money out there right now.
Right.
And we're going to be, we are scanning that constantly to help, you know, defer some of our costs.
Yeah.
And we'll continue to do that. I mean, the ARPA money, Pete has chaired that group, and there are some items that we're talking about, fund, recommend in the council of fund, that will, could be paid by ARPA.
The 7.1, 7.2?
7.2.
7.2.
And, and I think the recommendation tonight, you're going to see, the recommendation is not to allocate all of it at this point.
Right, right, 4, yeah. Right, right. So, I was just asking, I was just asking, that, that's kind of a, of a, if you will, that's just money sitting out there that kind of hurts the, the end result of the, doesn't it? If we don't use it?
Um, no, so, I guess it could help if we identify things in, that we're spending that we...
Well, that's what I'm kind of, that's what I'm getting at, so...
The, the trap we don't want to get in is funding so much out of the ARPA that when ARPA money expires, then we, then we find ourselves in the fiscal...
I'm with you, I'm with you, right, right.
If they're, if they're one, if they're one time... Yeah, one time expense, I was just saying, Pete. If they're one time, like, your capital outlay is 2.6.
Yeah.
You know, certainly you got ARPA money to take care of that.
Or if the revenue...
Your debt service, your debt service is 4.4, I'm sorry.
Or if the revenue generator...
I think you need to use your debt service, actually. That, that service...
Well, if they're revenue generated, they're going to, they're going to stay on this...
No, no, if they're going to generate...
If they're going to generate, right, right, then they got money coming back. So, if you're knocking out a couple of trucks down at the repurposing center, why not use ARPA?
Well, there are rules that we can and can't use it for, but in general, yes, I understand.
Yeah, okay, okay.
But, yeah, and there are some things that ARPA does qualify, and we, and we, that's in the recommendation, and that will help defer, just capital projects.
Yeah.
Projects that continue to...
Eat up, right.
And I guess one of the challenges is, is that, you know, is the inability to, you know, specify exactly where we can plug those in at this point, because, you know, a lot of these grant streams are coming down, you're still writing the rules as we speak. I mean, we're on weekly calls to understand, clarify, getting clarification.
ARPA, ARPA gave you a little wider berth than, than, than the COVID money did.
Yeah, they seem to be...
Yes.
So, I think with ARPA, we, I mean, taking those funds, if you're looking at projects, not vehicles, I agree with you, but projects that can, one-time capital projects.
And you'll see that tonight in the presentation that we propose that.
I mean, you're in range, if you're 1 point, if you're 1.8, you got two, you got 7.2 sitting over there on the other side, I would certainly look to try to use some money to knock those projects down.
But even at the 1.8, I think when we go through this, if we were to relook at the capital outlay items, we would actually point to certain items that are on there right now that ARPA will pay for.
Yeah, and that, what page numbers are, I mean...
And so, that's why we wanted to go next anyway.
Because we're going...
Capital outlay, we're just reading this.
Okay, gotcha.
And so, I guess just to start again, from our last conversation.
Now...
No, that's, that's the supplemental, okay. It should, it looks like this.
Okay, like this, the minus is blue dot on.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. So...
His hand is up.
My hand is up. Are, are these amounts, are these amounts on this page already represented on this page?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm, we're cutting, we're actually cutting off this 1.8.
Yes.
This is, this is really a revisit, because you did a lot of good work, the other...
Yeah, I had to step away if you remember.
Just revisit it real quick.
And I, and I didn't get a chance to look at the video of, but I'm sorry, so...
So, again, we've already cut 1.6 million dollars.
Yes, good.
And we also moved forward, well, moved to this year, to fiscal year 23.
Yeah, the current, current year.
Yeah, the current year, we moved 750,000.
That's good, that's good work.
And so, one of the things that we need to be careful of is, we need to be, you know, we're still looking at our spending for fiscal year 22, we need to ensure that we can absorb all that this year.
I see.
Yeah, because it's a big number.
So, the, the, the first big one is under finance. Could we pay the 250,000 dollars replacement of munis out of ARPA funds, since that's a project?
Don't know, the answer is that.[1684.16]
If, 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 if so, that's a big chunk right there.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll, we'll take a, a good look at that.
I know we can't buy an ambulance for three hundred thousand.
You actually can.
You can, I think you couldn't buy equipment, eh? You can't buy an ambulance? You can? There you go, half a million dollars. It's right there.
Three hundred apiece.
That's half a million dollars, right there.
I think I'm, I think I lost you, so.
So if you're, if you're, you're, you're saying you guys need to replace munis in current, in, in twenty-three for quarter million dollars?
Right.
Right? The ambulance are on page.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We don't use page numbers around here, so the next, the next page is three hundred thousand dollars. So together, that's half a million. I'm not even that good, man. And if we can get the knickers out with ARPA.
We can go through this and report back to you on which funds could be eligible for ARPA, and then.
But you're saying the ambulance is eligible for ARPA?
Yes, yes, and that's actually included as an AP.
That's, that's in the recommendations for today.
Heck, yeah, well, that, I mean, that's, that's no brainer to me.
So we, we, we'll go through this list and identify what would potentially be eligible for the American Rescue Plan funding.
What's this total list?
And let back to Pete.
What is this list total out to? Two, six?
Yes, the grand total.
Mm-hmm, two, six, okay.
Well.
Your problem solved, President.
I want to back up one, one second, when, and what it was, didn't you ask for two?
No, that was last year.
Was it last year?
Don't, come on, don't get another ambulance, don't, don't give no idea, don't give no idea.
I, I, I just, I just, it just was a flash, that's all.
Yeah, yes.
Last year, one this year.
One this year.
You'll get another next year. Hang on along with it, you know.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay.
So.
So what are we, what are we doing?
We went through this capital outlay, um, what we can do is go, we don't have to go line by line unless you want to go through it again tonight. But, you know, you did the work last, uh, week and knocked it down to two point six from three point three. And what we can do is pull out what is eligible in ARPA and report back to you.
That sounds fair enough.
You've identified a couple of things, uh, the, the, we, the, the ERP system for finance and the ambulance are two that we could, we could talk about offloading out of capital outlay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm coming.
I don't think we finished capital outlay for enterprise.
No, we did, we did not, but actually, do you want to go do that now or can we, okay? That should be, it's not attached.
Is that a separate attachment?
It's a separate.
Do we have that attachment?
Hmm?
I brought it up.
Can you pass them down?
I've got those two pieces. Is it just one sheet?
I think it's two.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's back, yeah.
Well, is that one right here for?
And we have one for Jessica.
Yes. Can you have one?
And once we go through this, that gives us to roll the capital request. Right?
Hmm.
The community center.
And we, we did start talking about this last time.
Good.
And I do have some notes.
Hold on.
Yeah, so, um, if you want to go line by line, uh, the humid, the humidifier.
So these are, where, where are these amounts reflective on the sheet here?
That's just general fund, that's just the general.
I'm talking about on the expenses, the bottom one.
Those are just the general.
So these are, these, these are not in here at all?
No.
Okay.
Right. These are the, this is just for.
And that count, okay.
And of course, Preston is in the room, so he could answer specific questions, but I suspect he'll tell you that everything on here is covered by grant. Is that correct? I'm sorry?
None of this is covered by grant for the community center.
Well, the, on the capital outlay, a good chunk of it was.
That was, that was.
Yeah, most of the capital outlay was ninety percent covered by grant.
And that was for parks and recs, though.
Other than the majority grass.
That was for parks and recs.
Huh? Well, yeah. Still a shot, but yeah, you're.
True.
So he's given your priorities here, priority one would be the dehumidifier. Second would be replacement of lobby floor. Is there any way that could be rolled into your gymnasium project?
Not sure, because for, for, it's basically, I'm not sure if you could sneak that up in there or not.
Okay. So the replacement of carpet is your third level priority? For council.
Seventy-five hundred dollar tripping hazard. I mean, I'm okay with.
Okay.
With all, all of these.
Okay.
Huge and annual replacement. The floor is, it's been an ask for a couple times, it's pretty, it's very coarse, so you can't clean it, it's, it's, when you walk in, have you ever noticed, it's like walking on that, that sandy stone?
You just jump over the lobby floor.
Yeah, yeah. Started to crack up.
So is council okay with the request, the, these, uh, four requests from the community center?
I think I am.
Okay.
You know, if we, if we have to.
Yeah, I'm just, this, this is, this is my handful, yes, this is my handful question.
If we have to pinch, we go to the priority three item.
Frank, you are.
Frank said he was good with all of them.
Going to the golf course?
So all four, all four go with the twenty-three? Yes, yes, yes.
All right, so golf course, yeah, and I think we actually did discuss this last time, because I have some notes. Mower. And the next is a blower, and I have notes that we were going to try to do this, this, this year if we could afford it.
Move it over to this year?
Yeah, that's, that, those were, that's what I wrote.
Uh, which, which two?
The first two.
The first two purchased in twenty twenty-two if possible.
Yes.
Move those all the way over to twenty-two. Okay. That'd be good.
Then, we have an attachment. Which is a, these are all, these are all number one priorities, priorities. It's an attachment, a tractor, carts, and a, a replacement bu- bumper rake.
I noticed that under his park, his parking lot maintenance, and under his pavilion improvements that we talked about before, he has no priority number for those.
So, Steve Rich said those were all number ones?
The last two, the parking lot maintenance.
The number ones?
Yep, yep.
When we spoke with Rich, he did say it's important to increase the people coming out there and the revenues, that you have more revenue to pay for these capital projects or for these.
Yeah, that's fine, I noticed here.
That's, that's a good thing, the value improvements.
Yes.
Not, not so much the parking lot.
Well, the parking lot lighting was a.
Part of the safety year.
Yeah. And keep, it allows us to keep the driving range open longer for more revenue. And that was the goal, to then add the lighting for the, to just keep that, that going, and then the snack shop going, and pro shop going for longer hours. And in the evening to have, as he put it, active, more activities for kids in the night time.
Right. Do we?
Right.
I mean, I know it's, uh, uh, was already deferred from last year, but do we consider deferring the parking lot maintenance piece? Do the parking lot lighting, do the pavilion improvements, which are big dollar items, but defer that for another year to, uh, because that's not as directly related to revenue?
That parking lot has holes that are eighteen inches down. It's, when you get out of your car, I'm surprised people haven't twisted it. I'm surprised they haven't marked off parking spots that you can't use. I, this was something that I was adamant that we should kick the can down the road as long as we can, I think we have.
Right, yeah, we're, we're definitely, all right, that point, I was gonna say the same thing.
The gap is, his gap is closing. But this year, the gap is closing mainly because he, his request for project funds has gone down. Like last year, he had the big pavilion.
I was just, I was just discussing with Joy, the fact is that with Rich, under Rich's leadership, we've seen a closing of the gap with the enterprise fund. I mean, he's actually moving closer to, you know, a break even, which, that's what we want. But, I mean, all these things are gonna lend itself to enhancing his revenue projection, to your point earlier. And, um, and this is a difficult one, I mean, you talk about quality of the course, these are replacement of, I mean, some of these pieces are incredibly old as far as the maintenance of the, of the, of the golf course. And the parking lot lighting and the maintenance are pretty important, because to Frank's point, Chuck, I mean, the lot is a rush lane.
Well, and, and, let's just face it, in the last several years, we've invested about, close to about two and a half million dollars between the irrigation and the bunkers and all that stuff, so, you know.
But, so, so Chuck, if you look at, um, the amount that we have to contribute to balance his budget for fiscal year twenty-three, we, it should be about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And, um, his capital outlay requests are about four seventy-nine, so i- if he didn't have to buy these things.
Right.
Yeah, he would actually be.
Right, he'd be there.
And some of this, yeah, you're replacing mowers, you're replacing tractors, those are expensive things. But as, as far as the parking lot, the lighting, the, the parking lot, there are, I, there's a limited number of handicap spots out there, but I, you're, once you, it'll be smoother and cleaner.
Yeah.
More people will be coming out to use it. With the improvements that are coming, more people have already started using it. It's all, it's, the big ticket items are investments that will show money down the road. The smaller ticket items are the things that, that just cost a bit of business.
Right.
So council, would, if, if you wanted to trim this back, I mean, he does have priority two for the Steiner mower, and a priority three for the three-point hitch debris blower. Of course, we talked about buying them this year, but if you wanted to defer this, he did, he did prioritize him down to a two and three. And then you could pick up all of those ones.
I think it was, uh,
Yeah.
I could support that, of course, actually, too.
Okay, yeah, Corey's.
Okay.
All right.
Airport.
And the nice thing about the airport is, it's one of your enterprise funds that is in the black.
Right.
They, they live within their budget.
They are surplus, actually. So, starting at, at the top, we have hangar renovations. Four hundred grand.
And I think you all know, I mean, the, the tee hangers are definitely in need of renovation. There was some discussion earlier about replacing some of them, but in talking to Mica, that, that project, you know, the, the, the cost to do that versus a revenue that could be achieved to pay off the newer tee hangers, it just, it's just not liable. And he believes that the rehabbing is what's important at this point for the tee hangers, and that's reflected in his request for the one hundred thousand.
Right, and that's, he has that listed as a priority one.
Yeah.
So you're all good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next is a priority two, the maintenance truck.
Right.
They have to be in service.
Okay, we have one okay with Corey with that. Sure, we have two, three, okay, we're okay with that.
Okay.
All-terrain utility vehicle, um.
You can buy two of them.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir.
You can buy two of them for thirty-five thousand dollars, each for thirty-five thousand dollars for both of them.
I believe that's totals, yeah.
Why is he buying all-terrain vehicles for thirty-five thousand dollars?
These are, uh, UTVs. These are, um,
Like four-wheelers?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah. I think fifteen, eighteen.
Okay, it's a little like, little gator thing, okay, okay.
Again, I'll just, you know, remind you that, that he is, he is in the black in his budget, I mean.
And, and so, and so all of these items will be able to be supported within the.
Yes.
Airport revenue stream.
Correct.
So, I mean, if you wanted, if you wanted just, you know, if you guys are good with this, and again, the last one's a weather system, which is really important, the grant will pay seventy-five percent of that, then we'll.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, 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 yes.
As long as the airport revenue can support this, I, I can, I can support the revenue stream.
Okay.
Good. And again, this is a, another one, the next one, aircraft hangers, this is an additional extend life cycle. Yeah, I encourage you to support that if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. You good, you good, you free? All right.
Is he getting, is he getting any more FAA money for the demolition? He's getting FAA money for when the building can be dem- demolished, right?
Yeah. Yeah, this, this is contingent upon, I mean, you're gonna be acting on some things with him tonight to accept the grant and then to hire AECom to go with the next phase.
For demolition.
Which will, uh, which is the extension or the replacement, the shifting of the runway. Uh, which will require the removal of the business center. You know, so I didn't say Black and Decker.
I noticed you didn't.
Right now, the official date.
Yes, you did.
Right now, the official date is still, for planning purposes, January twenty-four.
Are you around the corner?
Right.
Are you around the corner?
So the next item we have on here is the repurposing center. So Joy provided you with the spreadsheet that you all approved, that Pete asked that we print back. This is, uh, this is the spreadsheet that you all approved to start up the repurposing facility. And she made an alteration to it based on Warren's latest, um, which she is just explaining.
Let me go.
So.
I'm gonna find that one. Oh, here, I got it, I got it.
Slightly colorful.
Yes, it's tiny, I apologize for that.
But you do need a magnifying glass to see it.
It was unintentional. Not to say. Okay.
And so, we still have a, a column on this for the pilot study, but we really don't need to focus on that at all anymore, I don't believe. So through fiscal year twenty-two, what you'll see is that, um, we are expecting to come in a budget, basically.
For what?
Twenty-two, through, through twenty-two.
A difference of sixty-three, one sixty-three?
So if you look at the.
We're in fiscal twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah, but we're running, we want to focus on twenty-three. So, so far, we're fine, I guess, is the point I'm trying to make, but if you look at fiscal year twenty-three, the, um, the new projection for revenues is off by a few hundred thousand, so if you, you look at the revised budget, it's one.
One nine?
The budget was one point three, and his new projection is one point one.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little bit over, okay.
In the fiscal year twenty-three.
Right.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And so, um, we're also asking for an increase in spending from the budget that you had looked at back in, I think it was September. So, when we put the, when Warren put the numbers together in September, we were showing a surplus of two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three, but now we're showing a deficit of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars based on these new, based on his new projections. That's for, you know, the coming budget period.
Is his, this is separate from the roads.
Correct.
Capital request.
Correct, this is totally separate from roads, but this.
But in the roads request, he wanted a shop mechanic truck.
Yes.
For the repurposing center.
Does it say the repurposing center in the roads budget?
That, I wrote repurposing center, and I also wrote repurposing center under the loader.
That should not be.
Yeah, so that road, the roads, the maintenance truck for roads was for roads. Now, I was going to say to Warren that that should be also for the repurposing center. That maintenance man that has that maintenance truck should be flexible enough to use that as a repurposing center as well as roads.
Is, are we getting to the point where we might have a fleet mechanic?
We have two.
So we have two.
Yeah.
We have two there.
But, I mean, for county, all county vehicles?
So we, so we, several years ago, um, when we talked about this, we started encouraging departments to use the roads department for, for light, light maintenance, oil changes and such, rather than taking them out. And I'd have to check on the status of where we are with that. But there was an attempt to do that, to start, you know, using those maintenance technicians to be able to hold counter.
If, if he's having a, having that style truck, I mean, that's a spury tire style truck.
Oh, we have nice truck.
Yeah. Okay, so there's that, and then the gravel bucket, in the roads request, there's two of those for twelve thousand two hundred dollars. And the repurposing center, there's a request for one of those for sixty-one hundred dollars. So we approved one.
Right.
On the roads, and now he's asking for another one.
Yeah, we did cut that in half.
Repurpose. Yeah, so you're doing, that's good that you're looking at both the roads and the repurposing capital, but what we wanted to do was just give you a status update on what you approved and how it slid a little bit.
Yeah.
So that you're cognizant of the slide and you know what it is, I mean, his projection on revenue. We want him to hit his revenue projections, and they need to match up with his expenditures, and we're trying to, you know, hold the line on that. And we, based on your direction, but it has slid a little bit, we just want you to be aware of that.
And so, what, I think, maybe if you, you were interested in the, his break even.
Yeah.
Now, we were expecting the repurposing center to break even in fiscal year twenty-six. It looks like it goes out to set point twenty-seven, based on these new projections.
And so, he's gonna be, the project will be cash positive by, on an annual basis, by twenty-five or twenty-four?
On an annual basis, it will be cash positive. It should, well, on an annual basis, it should be cash positive in twenty-four.
Okay, and then, uh...
For the year.
For the year.
But, you know, again...
And, but then, but then we've got upfront investment, and it's gonna take that many more years to pay down those, those years that we were negative.
Correct.
In the enterprise fund. Okay. Thank, thank you for doing this. I think that that's, it's good to be, that we're tracking that.
I agree. So, Joy, was the, would the capital requests that counsel's looking at right now considered in the formulas that you put together in that?
Yes.
So, that's important to understand, that the capital requests you're looking at from him that we're going to go through are included in what you're, the overview that we just gave you.
Okay.
And as you, as you know, we initially rented equipment, and we bought some equipment, we rented some equipment, and that rent is turning into, transitioning into a lease, which will be coming to counsel at the direction of bond counsel to, you know, go through a process to be able to do the lease on the equipment.
Why aren't his radios killing it in with the radio repurposing?
They should, they should be, I caught that.
Yeah.
So, the fourteen thousand radios should be shifted over to the DES budget.
Thank you.
And only buy the radios for departments.
Right.
So, we'll take a look at that, and make sure it's, it's good, and if, you know, we can put it over in the DES budget.
So, if that goes over to DES, I'm good with the other two.
Okay. Do we have, do we have anyone else that are supporting the, all three with the condition of the fourteen thousand being put into DES as to buy for the, for the repurpose?
Yes.
That's two. Okay. And again, we'll make sure that that's, you know, that's, you need to understand that, make sure that request is good.
Okay.
Hi. So, that takes us through the, is that, does that take us through the enterprise?
Well, so, I wasn't expecting to have to go, well, we could talk about sanitary districts, but I think we're gonna talk about them.
Would counsel be okay with holding off on the capital LA for the sanitary districts when we talk about the sanitary districts with you?
Yeah, sure. To hold up until when?
We'll, we'll talk about these capital LA requests when we go over the sanitary district enterprise funds. Is that okay with counsel?
Yeah, whatever you wanna do, it's okay, I'm flexible.
Thank you.
Put numbers on my page.
The next thing we wanted to go over is the list of supplemental requests.
Supplemental requests? Okay. Did you, did you do any, do you want to go over that?
I did, I sent that to you. Yes, I did.
So, none of this was topped from that one point six? The one point, the one point six million that you had?
Correct.
Over here?
Right.
So, this has not... Okay.
So, I guess one question that I have is, as we go through the supplemental requests from departments and the Board of Ed, would you all like, she did, she printed something out, we can give you detail if you wanna go through the detail on the Board of Education's request tonight?
And so...
So, can we do, I'm jumping in the middle, and my apologies for being, for being an hour late. What the required maintenance of effort is that we have to give before we talk about another two million or whatever on top of that?
So, unless you're serious.
It's too early in the budget process for me to even process that right now.
So, I'm wondering if it might be, because there are, there are some things that are swirling around Annapolis that you probably have some understanding of.
Yeah, I watched the hearing, and they're just, the senators are completely utterly clueless what whole harmless means.
And there's some disagreement between DLS and the Board of Education on this matter, and there's, there's talk that they may end up needing more money than they... So, maybe we should just back off on the Board of Ed, and we can pick that up at another get-together?
There was some counties that they double counted, and I'm not sure if we were one of those counties or not, so there's numbers flying around, so...
Okay.
So, there's a chance that the totals will change, it sounds like?
Yeah, I think we need, we need to know exactly what is required under Kerwin in maintenance of effort, and what is our number, and then we need to decide from there.
What your ask is.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I had an email from Kat, or Kelly today, 'cause I, because I sent her an email and said, "Look, does any of this mean you all need less money?" And she's like, "Oh, we're not sure, when we, when we submitted the budget, we had the best numbers we have, but, you know, there's some, there's some uncertainty right now." So, because of that, there's probably no need to really go into detail on their capital request at this point. We could just have a full conversation about the Board of Ed and its impact on our budget and another subsequent budget.
It seems to make sense, kind of figure out what we have to do, and then go to narrative, what we're comfortable with.
Yeah, okay, right. So, then we could just go through the departments that have put in supplemental, uh, these are requests over the top. Some departments, we'd, we'd ask departments to come in flat budget, knowing that we were gonna put a lot of effort into workforce stability this year.
Did you already do that in the first time, talk about that piece of it?
No.
No, okay.
And so, you know, some departments came in flat, understanding that others just have needs that they have to address, and they put in these supplemental requests, which they were allowed to do. And we can walk through some of these with you.
Okay.
And again, these don't, there are no salary-related items on this.
Yeah, we're gonna pull salary out for a whole conversation about salary and...
Because it is.
So, you have the capital LA, but not everything right center?
Right.
So, you want to walk through this?
Yes.
Can you, I mean, can you explain your column too when we get to it? It says county manager. When you get to it, okay.
Okay. So, we're not gonna talk, talk about Board of Ed, the next up would be EMS.
Okay.
And they have a small request for an employee recognition program, four thousand dollars.
It's a morale-building effort, you know, paramedic of the year, and, you know, I didn't design it.
I don't, I don't...
But it's a small ask.
So, when there's nothing in the county manager column, it means you're passing on that recommendation?
I am passing on that recommendation, yes, sir.
All right, I can support that.
Okay, so that's one.
I mean, that's part of the bigger talk about employee salaries and what we're gonna do with all of them.
Well...
This is separate from...
I know, I understand it's recognition and awards and, but...
But there, yeah, there is a bit of a package that I'm gonna recommend to counsel to address the workforce stability, that, you know, salaries, healthcare costs, first-time home buying thing, and there's some things that we wanna...
And so, maybe that gets wrapped up in that?
Maybe so, but if you could just leave it there for now, it'd be helpful. Four thousand, okay. And then the sheriff, so I had a conversation with the sheriff, and he, he was able to offer up some, some things here. So, my recommendations are really his offerings.
Okay.
So, you'll see that in overtime, he backed, he backed his projection back off five thousand dollars.
You did or he did?
Well, I called and had a conversation with him, and he, he, you know, he sharpened the pencil and, and offered this up, in good faith.
So, these are subtraction, subtract five thousand from the, okay, not, wasn't down to five thousand?
Yes, except for...
Hey, but we passed a gas tax, thirty-six thousand, so...
So, I mean, you can see all these expenditures, mandated training, he, he subtracted fourteen thousand off the twenty-four thousand dollar ask.
Mm-hmm.
The fuel prices, he did increase, but if you remember, he agreed, we took out a vehicle, an undercover vehicle, and I think it was thirty-two thousand, and he wanted to shift thirteen thousand over to cover fuel costs, and then the remainder would have been a saving.
So, is the ask for, is the supplemental ask on fuel thirteen thousand now? It's not twelve thousand plus thirteen thousand?
It's twelve plus thirteen, yes, so this column...
Twenty-five.
Correct.
Gone.
And then you'll see, I hope we don't have to hit that.
Wait, wait, can we say that again? The ask is twenty-five and not thirteen?
The ask is twenty-five, it's an additional thirteen.
Hold on, I'm sorry, that this column, you...
It's an additional thirteen thousand?
Yes.
In gas?
Do you remember how, yes, sir.
I, I stepped away, so...
So, we, he had had, in his capital LA request, there was a vehicle, there were a number of vehicles, but it was one, an unmarked vehicle, and he let that go, which was a thirty-two thousand dollar savings, that was the other week. And what he wanted to do is take thirteen thousand dollars of that thirty-eight thousand dollars and shift over to cover gas, projected gas costs.
And gas is gonna be what's gonna be.
I know.
So, I mean, it is what it is, if it's higher or lower, if the gas price goes down, then it'll be, it won't be that much.
But you want, you want a budget for it?
He does.
So, it doesn't need...
He, he would like to do that. Under contracted services trial board, TLO, this, this is, this is, you know, there's great uncertainty right now around this. As you all know, tonight, you're gonna be considering legislation on the police accountability, and we've tried to budget for that, so he agreed to reduce the thirty-eight thousand eight hundred by five thousand dollars. It's still...
So, that whole line item is, is that legislation?
Should that be captured maybe in county manager budget anyway?
There's action.
Shouldn't that be captured open county manager?
Well, this is actually the sheriff's side of it.
This is the sheriff's side of it.
This is, this is before it gets to the accountability board piece. We have the accountability board, board piece budgeted over, it's in another location.
Okay.
This is their cost to...
Contracted services?
Contracted services, trial board, TLO, et cetera. I mean, I can, you know, I'd have to, at this point, I'd have to give you more information.
Yeah, and then, I'm thinking that should be probably under administrative, as administrative function.
I think we're still waiting for a final budget for that, for the police accountability board.
The only thing we're waiting for is, is how much we're gonna pay them, is the per diem?
Yes, sir.
The train...
Per diem, the training...
The training cost, and then the...
Supplies, the, we might have to increase a little bit of money for a staff person to pick up the extra duties that are gonna be...
Yeah, but that, that shouldn't be captured under the sheriff's department. That ought to be captured under administration.
If, if indeed, what he's talking about here is for the police accountability board and the, and the two committees, then you're absolutely right. If this is something to do with his, you know, running a law enforcement organization, what he has to do, then I, and I don't know the answer to that, I'd have to...
Well, let, let's get the answer to that, so we know what we're talking about.
Yeah, the term that is used is police trial boards, whether or not that's the county board.
That's accountability, but we don't pay for any other trial boards right now. We don't pay for any trial boards.
He, he, he would, he would right now, if he has a trial board that would come out of his budget, with whatever he has, if he has to... I'll bring, I'll bring back clarity.
That's the, that's the big piece of the total, thirty-eight eight or thirty-three eight, net of the five thousand back and off, that's twenty-six thousand for that trial piece.
Okay, okay.
We submitted a memo, but I don't know where it is so much.
So, we'll research that.
Yeah.
All right.
Why, why did you leave the teen court in, since the grant funding ran out?
I didn't wanna be the one to kill teen court, sir.
Yeah, but teen court was always picked up by private funding, and it would run through private partnership. And then when partnership folded up, the sheriff's department grabbed it, 'cause there was some state money to do it. And that was one of the caveats, I remember saying, and I'm almost agreeing with her on this, that if, if you pick up something and the grant money runs out, you better figure a way to do it under your current funding. So, this was one that, 'cause this is gonna keep on eating. This is, I mean, you're gonna pay thirty-five for it this year, it's gonna be forty next year, it's gonna be fifty-five the year after that. So, I'm just concerned whether or not that should be something we should be eating if we can't find grant funding for it. I mean, Mary Kay can, maybe she can find, maybe she can find grant funding.
Unfortunately, the grant will be, will not be available for fiscal year twenty-three. Be advised, we've conducted searches for available funding, but to no avail.
Yeah, I know.
Corey's point, listen to this, listen to this. The continued program, we respectfully request funding in the amount of fifty-six thousand.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna keep on, it's gonna keep on eating.
But it, I think it provides a great service to kids. Trying to think of any other government agency, short of fundraising. 'Cause he doesn't have a, he doesn't have a fundraising arm, right?
Well, you, you could, you can always fund, you can always set something up through Mitchell Foundation to fund this. And that's what they're for.
I think they need to look, I, I...
Yeah, you can always fund it through Mitchell Foundation.
Right now, there's just so much other stuff that he's asking for, and other people are asking for, we can't do everything. We just can't. And that might, might be something...
It's a low-hanging fruit, yeah, it's, it's not, it's nice to have, to give the kids an example of involvement in, in that legal system, so to speak, on a very minimum level. But if you can't grant fund it...
So, then, well, if the kids aren't going through teen court, what are they gonna go through?
Oh, again, some jurisdictions don't even have teen court. And of course, you have DJS, you know, they have to opt into teen court. And they could always go through a DJS type of, of a hearing. Even, even, for example, like, I was on a call the other week, teen drug court, the numbers on teen drug court are like abysmal. No, no kid is signing up for teen drug court. We don't even, I don't think Justice Kiel even runs it here anymore, because the kids have to opt into it, it's a voluntary basis to opt into it, and some kids don't wanna bother with it.
Is this like, they get caught underage drinking?
Underage drinking, exactly. And say, "Well, I'll, 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 I'll do drug court," and rather than go through, you know?
So, I know this is something that the sheriff is a big believer in, and, you know, I think...
It has, it has a good, you know, purpose to it, it's just whether or not it should be funded with county dollars. I'm not saying that it doesn't have a good purpose to it, and it's always been funded with grant dollars.
Right.
Yeah, and I, and I said that when they picked, when they picked it up, find a way to fund it. If you can find a way to fund it, that's fine. But it shouldn't come back off of, off of the general fund, the fund.
I imagine it's gonna come back either through a channel mark or grant.
Yeah, or, or Mitchell Foundation grant.
They're gonna ask for funds for it.
Right.
'Cause it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna grow, I mean, thirty-five is just a, just a handshake.
And channel markers are, there's all those mental health and substance abuse organizations are strapped for that. Just wondering what the impact would be to the county, if the kids are having to go through regular court or tying up other services that adults really need. I, I'm for it, I'm just trying to figure out how else we could...
Are you amenable to adjusting the ask?
No.
Well, you can't, you can't, you can't do it for less than that, you really can't. You're, you're either gonna pay for it out of general fund or you're not. So, there's no, there's no sense in cutting it, you're either gonna do it or you're not.
He's come back from the fifty-six already, so...
Yeah.
I'd give it to him for a year.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm just saying, no, it has to be grant funded.
I'm looking at the end, this end of the table.
Yeah, and there, and there could be some grant funding out there, I mean, if you go through, again, foundation, set it up.
You're okay with it?
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Pete? I'm on the fence. Okay, but we'll ride with you for a minute.
We'll jump on right side.
Okay. Pete, I can tell you, I'm gonna go out and ask the organization to fund it next year.
Right, and but the thing is, setting a precedent, we say it every time, I mean, court is ready. We say it every time, when this is grant funded, don't come back to us.
Don't come back in.
Don't come back at us, and we need, I feel like we need to stick to that. There's just other things in the budget that I think are gonna take...
Well, put it in capital, don't, don't put it in here, put it, put it on, I mean, just like we did with, with, we used to do with the laptop, the laptop here used to be a capital, remember that?
But how can you do two important capitals?
This is, this is really capital.
Well, you...
So, wherever you wanna put it, I mean, if you, if you want to thirty-five to go to teen court, we can put it wherever you wanna put it.
I'm, I'm just, I was just throwing it up.
It doesn't matter where you put it.
Yeah, I mean, you just gotta find a way to fund it, I mean, with grant dollars.
Does it start before the grant?
You gotta find a way to fund it.
You know, my, 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 if, if we're gonna do it, if we're gonna bite the bullet for one year, it means that next time, if, if we come back to it in a year, it's not gonna be supplemental anymore, and it's not gonna be tagged.
Right, yeah.
If you, if you do this, you're, you're, you're eating, you're gonna be, you're gonna be eating it for the, for the whole four, the next four years.
And, and you're also gonna turn over at least three council members, they're not gonna know. And, and you're also gonna turn over at least three council members, they're not gonna know this. I think we need to leave it with an example of why.
You're, you're eating this for the next four years if you do it.
Do you feel the pressure?
At an, at an increasing rate. I mean, this is not something that's gonna stay at thirty-five thousand dollars, trust me.
Let's, let's take it off.
I think the business community will step off to support it.
They will.
Did you say take it off?
Yeah. And those aren't the kids who will be using it, unfortunately.
No.
All right, so that moves us on to the next page.
Well, the health department.
Yeah, it's on the bottom, sorry about that.
Yes, health department.
Do we have detail on the health department's request?
Um, it's in there.
So we have to go in and grab that.
It's in the book.
So, the first one, though, is eighty-five thousand for additional school health staff to provide adequate service within the school, eighty-five thousand additional staff. We can pull the detail on that if you like, it's in your books.
So this is another thing that is, is outside of the board of education, that really should be wrapped, that should be wrapped into it, they should, you know, find, find the funds, they should look at the curve in categories and see what they have for those types of things, if there's a place for them. I don't wanna increase their budget, that's why we kept it out. Some of these things that they did increase maintenance of effort, but it's just something to, to, you know, to think about.
So this says additional school health staff provide adequate what? It, it cuts off.
To, to provide adequate service level.
You know, there's also a piece of legislation that was gonna require a actual nurse in every school, no matter what size.
I've saw that.
So, I mean, there's just all kinds of stuff, you know, going around, which is absurd, that you would not put a full nurse in Tillman, but you'd probably need more than one at Easton Elementary.
And Tillman have, agreement with Chop Tank to have a.
Yeah, that's how they do it there.
Do you have that detail? So, so she went over this when she came in for.
Yeah, she was talking about the number, the increase in school health office visits.
The complexity of the cases, some kids are too fed and have asthma or taking, you know, the other meds.
They should go to their own doctor, they should go to a clinic, or they should go to Chop Tank. I'm just saying, they have those other resources to do that.
Got it in short, kids.
She says that the program is experiencing difficulty in staffing schools efficiently due to staff illness, resignations, and burnout.
Can we put it in the school supplemental budget?
Then it becomes ma, part of maintenance of effort.
I mean.
Yeah, right.
Uh, I meant the.
Non-recurring, but it's gonna be recurring. I don't know that.
A nurse is gonna be recurring.
Yeah, they're not gonna buy it for that.
Yes, yeah, 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 clear that.
The supplemental tax.
The supplemental tax, can we put it all underneath the.
Fund it through that.
No.
You can't, I mean, it would have to be part of the school's budget.
Yeah, it has to be.
And that increases maintenance of effort, and they won't approve that in non-recurring.
This is the health department request to provide service to the school that they.
It's a health department request, but it's still a school expense.
School related. It's school related, they, they're providing service to the school, yes.
Which is what we want, and the school should be contracting out and using all of these crossroads and things like that for the, the, what they need for that kind of service, but it.
Is, is this eighty-five, is this a CNA, or is this a registered nurse, or what is, what is this at eighty-five? Is this salary plus insurance, plus Bennys?
I think it's a combination, both for CNA and nurses.
She doesn't specify.
She doesn't say whether it's a CNA.
Laura, I don't think this is one to be afraid of for maintenance of effort, because it's not like this is ever gonna go down.
No, but it, we, we did the same thing with school resource officers, we, we want to keep some of those things out of the, out of the budget. I understand what you're, I do understand what you're saying, but there are certain things that we wanna keep out of.
Keep eating.
Because we have control, because once it's in the school budget, we can't pull it out.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I honestly, I don't see this number ever going down, and so therefore, I'd much rather it be in the school supplemental.
Going down, or per pupil base.
Well, but, but we are assuming, by saying that, you're assuming that the school system will continue to use the health department for their health services. I mean, the, the, it's conceivable that the school may find a more equitable way to provide healthcare services in the future. However, right now, they're using the health department.
Right.
And it's costing the health department, so they're asking for additional funding to be able to do that. But it may not be that way. I mean, Chop Tank, they may end up working a deal with Chop Tank to provide services, and this may not be required at the health department. I mean, the need for the school will always be the need for health services.
Right, right. The question is, what bucket does it get paid out of?
Right.
And how much control do you wanna have?
Right now, you have more control over working with moving this number around with the health department, or adjusting it with the health department.
Well, that's what I was always saying, nothing to say we have to give them eighty-five thousand, we could give them fifty.
Well, it depends on what, that question depends on what you're asking for. If you're going with a registered nurse, then maybe eighty-five is the right number with the benefit. If you're getting a CNA, I just wanna know what, what this, what am I buying for eighty-five thousand dollars?
Well, we're gonna, we can go back to them.
You know, and the fifteen supplement to senior services personnel assistant, what is, what, what is that?
Again, let's, do you have the senior services?
Yeah, I do.
So we can go back to Maria on this, and then we'll figure out.
Yeah, it's, it's not a tremendous ask for health-related item at a hundred thousand dollars, but I'm just trying to figure out what is I'm buying.
So, she's saying that she's had increased senior challenges in recent years. The number of seniors enrolled has increased forty-five percent a year, and, and there's a higher level of needs for these people.
That the in-home service?
I'm sorry.
Is that, is that the in-home service that they're providing? The in-home service, okay, okay, all right, okay.
And the cost of supplies and services.
I got you. And then gas prices on top of it, okay, that, I got that, that's good.
So, I think we've got it, I think we need to support it. It's a question of what.
And it's probably a nurse, if it's eighty-five thousand, it's probably a nurse.
So, so what's council's pleasure as far as this number? Do you wanna support the request for a hundred thousand dollars, or do you want us to go back to the health department?
I'm good.
I'm ready to support it.
I'm good.
Of two supporting it.
Yeah, it's probably a nurse for us.
Well, I just wonder, but why, I wonder if it is, let's, let's at least find out, because, or put the, the number, you know.
I will, but do we have support, do we have, do we have support?
Because if it's like three or four different people that just go in and rotate around the schools for eighty-five, or is it one position? I mean, I would like to know, like you said, what that is.
It's, it's, it's the singular and additional staff.
I have two that, I mean, we'll go back and get confirmation, but do I, is there three that support the request, if it, I mean, is it content, is, is your, is council's telling me that you want me to, you wanna hold up on giving me approval for this, or?
Yes, I, I would like to go back and take a look at the school budget and perspective of that, see what that amount is, and what they've been.
Okay, we're gonna have to be clear on this and come back.
Okay. You know what else would be helpful?
I would just caution.
No, I was just gonna say, when we see the supplemental and say it's a line item, for example, fuel, right? What is the fuel budget? What are we going to? What, is the fuel budget a hundred thousand, we're adding twenty-five to it? So, when you, when you come back with, because you'll, I'm sure come back with the same sheet with the numbers that we approved. If you add a column, so I can see how much it's going up, you know, we're going to a hundred.
We've got that in the paper, right?
Yeah, it is in. I, I know, but it's, we, we end up not working from this, we end up working from these worksheets. So it'd be nice to see if, if it is like a, a specific line item that exists, to have a little thing, okay?
Well, should, so would, would you want that on fuel specifically? I mean, or, or are you wanting, how many line items are you looking at?
Well, if, if anything that you give us in the supplemental budget happens to correlate with an actual line item, I'd love to see what that line item is, so I can see how much am I increasing it? Without having to flip back and forth with every page.
Yeah, so that, that one, the sheriff's shield is going from a hundred and eleven, seven fifty to, from. From a hundred and twelve to a hundred and twenty-four.
Well, plus twenty-five.
Plus now another thirteen on top of that.
But that would have been a nice, easy way to just see it on these worksheets.
And so, with a new ERP, we'll be able to do that easily.
Oh, good, well, boy.
That'd be paid by the ARPA.
There you go, there you go. Everybody, everybody wins.
No, I'm with you, Laura, I think it's important to be able to do those kinds of things. The trouble is, we're cutting and pasting ourselves silly.
Need an intern.
To the late night, to make it happen, so, no, we don't mind, but.
You need an intern, you need an intern for budget time.
Yeah, and if the supplemental is new, you like a little asterisk next to it, okay, this is new, this is something that's just an increase in line item.
Charles, where are you on the health department, huh, Charlie? You, you thinking?
On the, on the health department, the direction I think I have is.
Just want to hear, I, I'm, I'm gonna support it, I just wanna hear, I, I, I wanna hear her, um, her, what the eighty-five.
The schools have two hundred and thirty-two thousand contracted instructors and therapists. And then it shows nurses and therapists contracted through an agency.
So they have some nurses already in their budget?
It doesn't.
So it seems like it's split?
That, that doesn't make sense, nurses and therapists.
We'll, we'll try to bring some clarity back to you at the next meeting.
It would just be nice if one time, they would ever put their budget together like this.
Okay, do you wanna move on to the next slide then?
Yeah.
This is emergency management budget. You'll see in the line item contracted services for network and networks and cybersecurity, it adds for a hundred and twenty-three, twenty, and I reduced it by twenty thousand. Or I recommend reducing it by twenty thousand, I should say.
So an increase of a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty.
That's right. And the rest, I, I pass on the recommendation to you for consideration. The, the fiber to the courthouse, we, we.
So you're only recommending the first line item then?
No, I'm recommending them all. So if I, if, there's nothing there, I'm passing on a recommendation, their recommendation to you.
See, like you could say passing, like I pass, I don't.
No, 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 I support, I support the recommendation, sorry. So the fiber, you know, just on the fiber piece, we run, we, we've been paying for the fiber connectivity of county buildings through the DES budget, because they, they have to have broad connectivity in that center, so we just, in our budget, we've expanded some other buildings, and we just, we ran out of that budget, and this would be increasing the size of the fiber to the courthouse.
We had Zoom problems, we couldn't even Zoom.
Yeah, but that's part of why we're doing it.
Because of which side of the building.
And Bay Street.
Oh, really?
And, and.
Which side's faster than the other, because it's wired differently, because it's all a little different.
And then, and then, right, and then the next item is radio maintenance, this is, this is, this is an actual cost. CAD maintenance is an actual cost, the generator maintenance is an actual cost, the workstation maintenance is an actual cost. But pass, I mean, I support the recommendation.
So I have a question about cybersecurity.
Yep.
So there's legislation that would potentially pay for some of that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You know, I guess, we're all gonna know in three weeks or so, whether any, if there's anything that we're approving that would come off.
And we made, we had this discussion, it may have been before you came in, about the fact that there's a lot of money coming down, and it's, the challenge is trying to figure out where it is and where we can plug it in, but we, but we're constantly watching that, and you're to your point, in the next couple of weeks, with the state budget, we'll get some clarity.
Right, but it's, you know, it's without knowing the whole pie, and we're just like, well, we're gonna pass on this, because we're gonna pay for that, but then that gets paid for with that, and then we can come back to this.
So, were you here when we went over the overarching? We're about one point eight away from revenues meeting expenditures, one point eight million, which is very close.
Is that including or not including a transfer of savings?
No, that's, that's.
It includes, it includes an educational supplement of one cent, one penny. And we also adjusted local income tax, recreation and transfer taxes upward in total by two million dollars, but that's based on our actual experience, we think our estimates too conservative.
Okay.
And we cut out one point six.
Not a rate increase, but what you expected for them?
Yes. What we expected to bring in, yes. And we also, we had already reduced the capital LA budget by one point six million, so all told, we shrunk.
So right now, you don't have a transfer from previous year budget yet?
Oh, no, that, no, there is a transfer from pre, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking. There is baked into these numbers, yes. There's eleven million dollars that's, yes.
But that's not from savings, that's from, so, so fundamentally, just, you know, you, we have a savings account, fifteen percent of it is for any day. But then we have, we, we overbudget, we always overbudget from year, and we bring it over to the next year. And in good years, that works fine, that's why we overbudget. So we're talking about bringing the eleven over to the next budget, but we're not dipping into savings.
My problem with that is you do that, and once that's gone, then you, you've built a budget, and next year, you may not have eleven million dollars in prior year's expenses.
Understand, that's when you have to go to your savings, and that's why we keep a robust fund balance. We don't wanna go into our fund balance, that's the last thing we wanna do.
Right, but that only lasts for a few years, so you have to build a budget that's closer to your actual revenues, maybe as close as possible to that.
So that's a policy decision by you, I mean, so how, you know, historically, Angela has always been incredibly conservative on her revenues and overestimating her expenditures, and because of that, we bake into each budget a surplus. And that surplus goes to the next year to balance out, and that's just a, that's a funding strategy. And if council wants us to change strategy, to tighten it back down, we can do that. But what we're not doing is, we're not dipping into the savings account, which is a fund balance. That would be an emergent thing. We don't wanna go forward having to bank on going into our savings account.
Took me a little, a couple of years to get used to this, where, where it looked like, it looked like we're spending that down, but in fact, we have not been spending that down.
No.
And that was hard for me, because I would, you know, you have to segregate the conversation, because they, they kind of, they would just refer to as fund balance. But really, what you're doing is you're taking a surplus from one year and moving it over to the next year, and that's just a strategy. And, you know, if you wanna tighten down that strategy, so that you're not bringing eleven million over, you know, we can do that, we can tighten it down, whatever council desires.
Forget the new program.
It, it actually will be a big help, because it gives a better visibility, and, and we'll be able to produce reports really easy.
We'll do that.
That's the case.
Um, okay, so, we'll go back to the health, where are we? No, we're on the emergency management.
I think we say yes, we're there.
Okay, are we okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. Now you wanna go to Chesapeake College.
I think a volunteer fire company, we got Chesapeake College, yeah.
Yes, where are they going? School and a line item done.
Oh, wait a minute, oh, yeah, it was, okay, I missed that.
And of course, you, you have Chesapeake College in your budget book, and there's some, there's a letter from, and we're gonna actually have a meeting with them.
Yes, yes. It's enrollment, it's an enrollment number, so.
Right, and me, and me, you know, Clay and I, we met, met with Cliff, too, about a month ago.
Right, and we're gonna have.
That's a good thing we've got more people.
So, I think at the, all five counties are required to meet with the councils with.
Yes.
And we're gonna be setting that up in the next thirty days.
Yes.
But, I mean, do we have support on their request here? I have two, two yeses, or yeses? Okay, all right, David.
So next is volunteer fire companies.
Yes.
So.
It's offer money, it doesn't cost you anything, like, yes.
Okay.
It's no brain.
So you're gonna see tonight, just on the fire company front, they've asked for an additional two hundred and twenty-one thousand in operational support. There is certainly a piece of that, maybe not all of it, that can be covered by ARPA.
But it's a grant, it keeps on eating though, Corey.
So.
Well, speaking of that, you can always pull that back out, but.
So what? So what you're gonna see, what you're gonna see.
Okay, pull it back out.
What you're gonna see in Pete's presentation tonight with the ARPA funds is that we wanna set aside five hundred thousand dollars for the fire companies in the form of grants and/or to offset their, their ask here.
So the last about two and a half years.
Right, but, but again, I think that what we're trying to do is, if we can offset some of it with the ARPA money, it would be great. At the end of the day, the fire company, the volunteer fire companies, as you all know, is an incredible deal for the community, when you talk about labor costs.
Gotta do it.
Yeah, so, okay, do I have one?
Yeah, I want them to come to my house when the alarm goes off.
All right, library, we have the library.
They have an explanation of their needs, it's found in your book on page forty point three, and we're listening. It's included in their supplemental request.
Forty point three, forty point three, forty point three. Forty point three. They say that.
Six percent pay increase, what number am I looking at here? Okay, this is the right number.
About a hundred and forty-three thousand?
So.
Okay, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Six percent pay increase.
For them to ask for, we're going to get whatever percentage pay increase the others do, so I would like you to pull that out.
The first line.
Salary.
Yeah, seventy-six thousand dollars, and it's like, whatever we do for our staff, we will do a comparable amount for them.
She's looking at this. It says six percent for salaries for the library.
Okay.
Ten percent.
Ten percent increase the library portion of a cost providing staff retirement, health insurance?
It's a.
So they have to cover that?
Staff.
Well, we should do whatever we do for the county employees plus the three point five percent that we've already awarded to the county employees. We did a mid-year.
Listening to them?
I'm listening, I am listening.
We didn't do the mid, we didn't do a mid-year increase for the library employees. We did that only for the county employees.
We did, that's correct.
They also didn't, didn't work a lot during COVID either, so I'm not so sure that I'm supportive of that at this point. We did not talk about it last month when we did the other, and they weren't in the library for a very long time. So they probably still got paid. But they didn't go over and above during that time. So I'm not for going backdating and doing that as a mid-year.
That's an important conversation that has not been held, and there's a lot of people who've been slighted who have shown up to work through this, and were put in harm's way, put themselves in harm's way to put up glass, to clean, to finance office.
What I'm saying, library was closed.
I know, but it's, that's a, in my mind, that's a very different conversation, whether their ongoing income, which, I was the one who said that I like three and a half percent because that's historically what inflation is, I think we're in a very weird time right now that is, I expect costs to come down from there eventually. Whether wheat, if that is going to be a nightmare for another year or two of Russia. We're going to see a change in the economy where inflation will come back down historically, say, at three and a half percent as it always has. And we just gave everybody seven percent increase, extra money in their pocket, and when we see inflation come down, they're still going to carry on with that extra seven percent. But those individuals who were able to take off, stay home, keep the community safe as we asked them to do, and shelter their business, I thank them for that. But for those who came in and continue to have to work, they have not been thanked the way that they should have been, in my opinion.
Well, I think that's a separate conversation, it's not part of the next budget, I mean, we need to talk about right now, in their supplemental, which is what we're doing right now, is the supplemental, I assume we're going to do whatever percentage we're going to do for the rest of the county staff, and we'll build that into the, to the budget there, to me, that's not supplemental. If that's the conversation right now, is the supplemental budget.
So if the direction of council is that you want us to consider these with the conversation we have with you about county employees, and we can do that at that point.
Right, to me, that they are quote-unquote county.
Apparently, listening to this.
It paid forty dot three in your book.
So the library, we just have a total here of a hundred and forty-three, and the details on that.
And then the other thing is the OPEB, I mean, that, we're just going to pay it. I mean, we have done that for the county, for the county, we put some money aside, but that's, you know, we're doing PEGO for that. I don't know that we need to set aside money in a savings account for the library. To me, that would also, if we ever needed to pull money out of OPEB to pay for salaries, we would do, we could do the same thing for the library staff.
I don't think they're counting our OPEB right now.
No, but I mean, why, why do we need to pull?
This is the start of our OPEB.
I don't, I'm not convinced we need to start a OPEB fund for them, because we just pay, we pay their whole budget.
We don't pay them.
They pay the entire budget, they get some federal and state dollars as well, we don't fund the entire library budget, no, no way, no way close to it.
Yeah, I just don't, I just don't see, three of their four items that they're asking for are all salary related.
Well, if those employees are not covered underneath OPEB right now, they need to be covered. So either you increase their line item to encumber so they can do it, or you set aside these funds for them to start it. Right now, they don't have any money in their OPEB, and their obligation is over two million dollars.
Oh, whole point seven.
Wrong, not too many, it'd be two million.
I'd be inclined to give them money and cut out some of these capital expenditures, because it, it seems to me between technology and transportation, that technology's improving, we're running Wi-Fi, people are going to have greater access to reach the library through their computer at home, they're not going to have to go in there and pack a room full of people to see a presentation. You can do a Zoom, and you can have anybody, you can have experts around the world providing.
You're absolutely right, I mean, the broadband and everything, and what we're going to talk about this evening, filling in the last ten percent or whatever.
I love books, and books are extremely important if there's a space for people to go get any book they want, and read it, and return it, and share it around the community. But meeting rooms and conferences and, you know.
You're right, you're right.
We need to do a square footage of, so.
Yeah.
I, I would be for the income, the not.
Again, to me, these are not supplemental requests, these are a different conversation. Because once you increase them, they're not supplemental anymore, we just said that about the other. Once you increase one's salary or put something into health insurance, it's just, it's part of their budget, it's not supplemental.
What were you going to say tonight?
Well, we have fifteen minutes left, and it'd be great if we could push through the rest of this. So we could ensure that the library personnel end up getting the same increase that you decide to give county employees in an upcoming conversation. We can hold, we can defer the, we can defer the conversation in any of these organizations if you're interested in them having the same increase as county employees. We have a discussion.
I think the conversation is broad and probably one for the next council to consider. How are you going to treat your library employees? If you're now going to make them quasi-county employees, then you got to bake all this in. The insurance, the OPEB, and all of that, right now, they're not, they're a separate entity, they're a standalone entity. So if you're now saying, hey, let's treat them like a county employee, then you got to rewrite everything then to bring them in. And so right now, what she's telling you is that we don't have any OPEB starting, and we don't have any money in OPEB. We need to start that, we need to cover our insurance, we need to cover our insurance. So it's either, how are you going to treat them? If you're going to treat them as quasi-county employees, then bake them in and do that. They get the same raises, they get the same OPEB, when you do OPEB, you count those twenty people into your OPEB numbers.
So it's kind of like.
So you got to figure out how you're going to do this, and I won't be around to do it, but I'm just saying, you got to, if you're going to do it as we're doing it now, then that's what she's saying she needs. If you're going to bring them in as quasi, then your number is going to go up anyway, it's going to go up anyway.
And it's almost like we're treating it as an enterprise fund without them having the revenue to sustain themselves.
And it's not just the library, I mean, there are other organizations that you provide funding for that have employees that are, they're asking for a percentage increase. So there isn't a standard policy that all these organizations, you know, enjoy the same increase as the county employees. Some are more, some are less, historically.
We flirted one time, Frank, about making the neighborhood service center a public cap. There are public caps in the state, neighborhood service center is a private cap. But there are those community action partnerships that are part of county government, all of those people work for the county. They have a county PIN, they're in the county retirement system. There was, we flirted with that under Annie about doing that very briefly, but the cost of converting them over was too expensive. So this is what you guys have to think about, are you going to treat these people as standalone entity? Or are you going to treat them as quasi-county government? If you're going to do that, you're going to increase anyway, because you're going to have to increase, roll them into your retirement system.
And the middle ground might be just having a standard policy. Historically, you've gotten individual requests by individual agencies, organizations, and you've made decisions on those. If you wanted, the middle ground would be to say, all the organizations that ask for pay raises for employees, you want to wait and see what you're going to do with employees and mirror them. You could do that by policy, I mean, we could, we could figure that out.
I'm not going to give them more than, but we probably, probably should not give them less than.
So then we need to look at all those organizations that are asking.
Are you talking about your senior center? The same thing with the senior center, we had, we had the same issue with Charlie a couple of years ago, because they had been left out when it came to it. Your library staff, you know?
Right.
You know, we gave Merlin a little bump a couple of years ago because our people were trending lower as far as keeping people employed.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we will look at pulling those all out and looking, we'll create a separate list.
Okay.
And.
I think that makes sense.
What about with regard to the capital piece of it? The capital equipment that they're asking for?
Is that in here, capital equipment?
That's not part of the supplemental.
That's not part of supplemental.
No, it's not.
No.
No, it's not.
No, that's, no. One forty-three is just the OPEB and the pay increases.
Okay.
Other than this personal cost, you've got the six thousand.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we did?
Yeah, we did, so we decided, so they needed audiovisual system to be replaced, and I think we were okay with that. And then we, they also wanted to replace some computers, and Park, I think somebody was going to talk to Parker about.
Right, and it's based on what Frank just said, I mean, look, everybody has these and these and whatnot, and they don't necessarily need to go into, not, the vast majority do. I think you're not going to see an increase in, like you said, the Zoom meetings and stuff now, and why do you necessarily need, you know, the latest and greatest technology for audiovisual?
So what I would, what I would offer to you for consideration is there's a segment of our population that depends heavily on the library for any access to online, that don't have the means to get a phone.
There are free ones out there, you can get them for free, and the broadband is coming, I'm just saying, I think it's part of the.
I completely agree, but we can't transport them to two, three different locations. We can figure out a main hub that would be best for those individuals, whether it's a senior center, a library. I don't think it should be four, you know, in this small county, yeah. We have two senior centers, two libraries, that's a lot of meeting rooms for different individuals that can't, that are at the lowest income with the greatest need.
Not to mention, we have seven schools that could, some of that can be used as well for those types of meeting rooms.
So I think, I mean, there's a piece that is enhancing the meeting room to facilitate organizations having meetings, such as the library. And then there's the computers, which are the gateway for a segment of our population to go in and really access online. Two different things in the library, for example, and they already have the people coming, I mean, there's a need there. And this is just upgrading those computers so they can keep feeding that need.
And you've got to, you've got to replace computers on a, every so many year basis.
And that's not a, that's not a deal.
Yeah, but that's not the part of what this ask is. But remember, the library also does programming as well, I mean, I've taken my kids to a number of library-sponsored events. They run in speakers or readers and things like that. So, you know, one of the greatest, one of the greatest fears of Major League Baseball was TV. The owners, the owners were actually afraid of TV because they figured that they, people can sit home and watch the game at home, they wouldn't come to the ballpark. Well, they found out that wasn't true, that people still liked the fact of coming to the ballpark and watching the game in the sun, and having their, having their son with them, eating hot dog and a beer. Of course, right now, that costs you fifty dollars, but people are going to use libraries, no matter if the technology is there, you know, people still want to come and congregate at the library, be it to listen to a speaker or to watch a program. So I think the libraries will still have its place in communities, much like ballparks do, even with the advent of TV, people still want to come to the stadium. So I think that libraries will still play a role in your community.
Okay. Would council be okay with us kind of breaking off here, because we're running out of time right now, we can pick back up on, finish up the supplementals, and we'll go on, and we'll create a new agenda for you on Thursday.
That sounds great, Thursday, Thursday at four thirty.